In our regular session of the Borough Mayor and Council for Monday, April 27th, 2020, that is about four minutes after 7:00 PM. And as we have done for many, many years, I will begin the meeting with recitation of the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy coming will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. You will allow me, I was just making my mayor's comments later, I'm just gonna, as we did the last meeting, just do that right now. This is our second regular session meeting of the Borough Mayor and Council using the livestream format, and we thank everyone who is following tonight's meeting online. We remain grateful for our community's response by taking social distancing seriously and continue to follow Governor Larry Hogan's stay-at-home orders. On Friday, Governor Larry Hogan announced a phased-in approach to returning to normal commerce, revision services, meetings, and social gatherings in the weeks ahead. Planning the operation of the town of Berlin, we currently are hopeful the first phase of reopening will begin by around mid-May. The second phase by early to mid-June, and the third and final phase of the plan to begin permitting larger events and further resting restrictions by July. These are all estimates, but they're just based on the best information that we currently have and that the efforts that have been made both here in our community and in our state continue to move forward. At this time, we are hopeful that every area of our state will return to the new normal by no later than July, but we all should be prepared that our new normal for the immediately foreseeable future may still include some social distancing and limits on the size of public gatherings. This all depends on many factors beyond our control. Earlier this month, the town of Berlin canceled all public events in our community through the end of June. We will continue to depend on the governor's office for guidance moving forward. Hope Berlin Mayor and Council decisions regarding reopening commerce and community activities will continue to be in accordance with the directives and timetable of the governor's office and within the guidelines from the Maryland Department of Health and the Worcester County Health Department. We thank all Berlin citizens for your response to the health crisis, and we ask that you continue to be respectful for the health of others as you also protect your family and loved ones. Thank you very much. And now we shall begin the regular session agenda, and the first thing is the approval, first item on the agenda is the approval of the general fund work session minutes of April 13th.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the work session minutes of April 13th by Councilmember Goyas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have, we have three--
Do you have--
You have no problem, understand? And we'd be glad to be back to this tonight if anyone needs to do--
Just for those that don't understand.
No, no, I understand. Very good. And so it's, we have three votes for approval of the minutes, one abstent and one abstention, and one council member absent, and that's Councilmember Britton. All right. Next is the approval of the regular session minutes of April 13th.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the regular session minutes for April 13th by Councilmember Goyas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. So the result is the same, three votes for the approval, one abstention, and one, of course, Councilmember Britton is not here. Right? And now moving on to item two on our agenda, which is first, there's four items, A, B, C, and D. Two, A, is a motion, 2020-10, approving the request by Worcester County Recreation and Parks for summer youth instruction basketball programs. So, we're gonna give that to Mary. Okay?
This is very similar to what Worcester Recreation did last summer in Henry Park. It was a very popular program. Obviously, in light of the current pandemic, this is what their plan is. That may very well change depending on what the situation is in June, but assuming that everything will be back to normal, which is a pretty broad assumption, they would request approval for their instructional programming.
So that, so we can make that approval contingent on whatever restrictions are in place for the state of Maryland with Berlin's, the town of Berlin's compliance?
Exactly.
So move. I have one question.
Sure.
Didn't you say that all events are canceled through June? So they should slate this to begin in July and not in June? If you could just pass that message along.
Yeah.
Well, that would, that would be what I would suggest because, because this is, they actually submitted this paperwork kind of before all of this started, so they really haven't had a chance to look at it from that point of view. However, if you want us to go at it with the approach that we have declared that no events shall take place, then we can ask them if they want to adjust those dates and bring it back. Instead of, in other words, you can deny this tonight, or you can table it pending a rescheduling.
Could we approve it just already contingent upon, contingent upon the adjustment? I move that, that this event be approved contingent upon the adjustment of the dates to comply with the closures in the town.
The only reason that I'm reluctant to put it that way is because we don't know what their schedule is. They may not be able to reschedule it according to that.
Well, if they can't, that's on them, but we can still approve this tonight based on my motion.
All right. So we want to make sure that's understanding that that, is that, you're adding that additional language?
Yes.
That we're, that whatever, if such gatherings, and which I certainly hope are enabled by June 6th, they can proceed. If not, they would have to wait to begin the program at whatever length and when that is authorized by the governor's office and so forth.
That'll work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You're saying to begin in June, when everything else is closed through June?
That's what I'm saying. If this can't begin unless everything, unless the governor's instructions are, because he's gonna do it in phases, so I'm not sure, and that's the same. Let's say for the sake of this that parks are reopened and outdoor activities, well then they'd be fine, but it, but I don't know.
Well, it's can be, if they're parks reopen and they increase the number of folks that can congregate.
Yeah, yeah. If it's, if it's strictly six-foot social conditioning still in place, it makes us a moot point.
However, you closed everything through June, so what I'm saying is that it's on our end, not the governor's office.
We didn't close, the parks were not closed through June. The parks were closed until further notice. The events were canceled through June, but that doesn't necessarily, this isn't, this wouldn't qualify as an event.
Okay.
It was two different decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
Good point in both thoughts, but very good. Because, yeah, this is, we want to make sure we all understand, all of us, what we're trying to accomplish here and what we're trying to avoid. Okay? So we have, any other questions? We'll call the, call the motion to question. All in favor of Councilmember Berlin's motion to approve the request by the Worcester Recreation and Parks to have instructional basketball programs in the town of Berlin from a beginning on Saturdays from June 6th to July 25th? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, and let the record show that the motion passed four to zero. Okay. Now, well, now, item two, which is a motion approving the request, too big, a motion approving the lease arrangement between the mayor and council of the town of Berlin hereafter the landlord and Brian Rushmore hereafter the tenant. So--
And I'll take that.
Kind of explain--
I want to go back, I want to go back in time, probably two months ago, I shared with you all that Mr. Rushmore has interest in leasing some space at the old Tyson Processing Building. He and I met a couple times out there, and we have, when I say we, he and I have agreed on the actual footprint that he wants to lease. As I mentioned a couple months ago, on the north side of the processing building, there's a section of that building that has five bay doors that are non-functional as we speak. In my discussion with Brian, what we think would be in the best interest of all, he would, this, this is all at his expense, he would install a functional garage door in the middle bay, and then the 7,000 square foot space that is immediately beyond that bay door is what he would utilize. He would also be responsible for providing, building the wall, if you will, for security. He did ask the question about installing a motion detector, so, you know, obviously what we can do to help him with that, we would, no calls to the town again. And then in turn, Mr. Rushmore asked about the possibility of leasing some parking in that parking lot, and that parking itself, again, I don't have the diagram in front of me as we speak, but it was all the way up on the asphalt and in the gravel area that's closest to 346. So, that said and done, his total lease, monthly lease amount would be in the amount of $1,900, to break that down, $400 for the parking, and then $1,500 a month for the garage space.
So the total for a year's rent for both parking and building would be $22,800?
Correct. Now, I originally thought about bringing Mr. Rushmore up here to let him present his case, but what I did ask him to do was to write something that I can read to you folks, I think it's in the packet, and he says to the mayor and council, "I'm ready to express interest in leasing of Berlin Falls vacant property that used to house the Tyson Chicken Plant. After several discussions with Jeff Cleveland, we decided as a company that it would benefit us and the town of Berlin to lease space across the street at Berlin Falls as warehousing space. We love the idea of renovating this part of the building in hopes to bring a bit of fresh life to the property. The use of this space will include dry storage and storage of our product waiting to be sent out to distribution all over the world. Best regards, Brian Rushmore of the Berlin O.P." And I do bring to your attention, again, we discussed this a while back, in this lease, we do have a 90-day kickout clause, so everyone understands that, he understands that as well. And that kickout clause is not only applicable to the building, but also to the parking.
And obviously, something we've discussed informally often on, but this is the first actual take, is trying to generate revenue from those buildings until a permanent use is found or until they are leveled.
Hi, David.
Okay.
There's, we have two leases up for discussion tonight, and they're both in different formats. And when I read this lease, I can't find, I see like the terms of the lease agreement and the rent, and then on the other lease, I see the same thing in a different format, but this does not include a late penalty, from what I can tell? Or am I missing? I think the other lease says a 5% late penalty, and this one does not--
They're the same, they should be the same.
Just double-checking now, we can always add.
Throw it out differently, I didn't know that.
Because item two, rent, or term and rent, section D of the second lease that we'll discuss, talks about a 5% late charge, but I couldn't find that in this one.
If you go to page six of the lease, you'll see, I think you'll find what you're talking about.
Where?
Page six.
But you'd say--
About a third of the way, bear with me, my eyes are playing games with me too.
It's midway through.
Midway through.
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent.
To line the begins, sums so paid.
What's the difference between the two leases, one's 5 and one's 12? Can we make this one match the other lease?
You certainly can, if you like.
How do we arrive at that number, first of all?
These are, these are numbers that I've used for leases that I've done for, on the town's behalf for the last 10 years.
Do we think 5% is reasonable?
That's why I got all mine.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a need for 12.
Does everyone, does anyone have any objection to making them both 5%?
I'm not even there. I'm making it consistent.
If we can make that adjustment before there's a vote?
You can.
Yes?
I have a question. Where does the lease address renovations that he talks about, just to renovate this, this space?
That's alterations. Eight, one. Under six. Paragraph six.
Thanks, Ben.
Sure.
With the change to match the lease of 5% late penalty, I'll make the motion approve?
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion to approve the proposed lease for the rental of part of the property and part of the old Tyson Building to Brian Rushmore and his firm at the rate of $1,900 a month, all in, and with the revision that Councilmember Tindall explained, that it would be a 5% late fee. All in favor say aye.
Can I, just one, one thing? Can we, I mean, we need an appendectomy to show exactly the area on a map.
Yeah.
We just for a second.
Yeah.
That way there's no ambiguity.
My motion's to approve of both changes.
Yes, yes. Is everyone in consensus that please, very good suggestions? And yeah, I think it would be helpful to everyone, but not only us, in the future council members or administration.
Necessary.
Oh, it is.
Thank you.
You have to know which lease.
Thank you. All right? So now, now we're talking about--
Mr. Mayor, you need to call a court of vote.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All in favor of the lease with the divisions as recommended by Councilmember Tindall? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Again, motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Now we have a second lease, this one with Dr. Christopher Galliardi. So again, I go back, probably 90 days ago, I presented, well, this goes back actually probably a year and a half ago. Galliardi had approached the town--
Actually longer than that.
Longer than that.
About three, three and a half.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, time flies.
That's when I drafted that lease about three, and I think it was in 2015 or 16, and then it just kind of went away.
Well, it went away because his building, I forget which year it was, but the year that he expressed interest, the pipes froze in that building, and he had--
Major.
Major water issue, so. But he's back, he's interested, he wants to move forward, and the piece of property is on 346, basically to the east of his structure and to the west of the water tower that's out there. I have had a discussion with Jamie and with Marvin and with Jane, when Jane was here, asking the question if this would impede on anything that they need as far as access to the water tower, and there is no issue with that. So the understanding gets from the town with Dr. Galliardi as well, this isn't just going to throw some gravel down, he's gonna have to do stormwater removal on that property, and he is actually going to pay that piece of property.
Is it, is it, this need is additional parking?
Additional parking. And I asked him as well to provide a document or review as well. To the mayor and council of the town of Berlin, my name is Dr. Christopher Galliardi, and I've been operating a medical office and ambulatory surgical center in Berlin for the past 14 years. It is located at 10308 Old Ocean City Boulevard. We do business as Berlin Interventional Pain Management. When the office was constructed, it was originally meant to accommodate two main, two pain management physicians doing interventional pain management. Through the years, I have attempted to recruit another physician, but have been unsuccessful in getting anyone who wants to come to the area. I have used recruiters and extensive advertising. Last year, I was approached by a physician at Atlantic General Hospital who was interested in joining me in private practice, Dr. Zakhy, Z-A-K-Y, when he started with me on May 1, 2020. My largest impediment right now to having him join the practice is inadequate size of my parking lot. I only have 10 spaces and I have employees. I am interested in renting the land, which is next to my parking lot. I will then hire a land engineer to create a parking lot, which complies with both federal, state, and local laws. For safety reasons, we will use a pass-through system with one-way traffic through the parking lot. This way, people will not have to turn around or back their car onto Old Ocean City Boulevard. The design of the parking lot will not inhibit your access to the water tower or the storage shed, because that will be in the design. I do have an initial sketch of the layout, which was created by Solomon Engineering. I've gotten a few estimates, and the development cost of the parking lot will range between $80,000 and $100,000. Your lawyer did supply me with a draft of the lease, which I'm in agreement with. Thank you for your consideration, Christopher Galliardi, M.D. And his lease amount, again, is consistent with what we discussed with Brian Rushmore at $400. It's actually about the same amount of square footage. I have the same comment with that, we need a--
All right.
Yeah. Well, it indicates on the front that there is a drawing, I know, I've seen--
Yeah, I've got it. I've got it.
Just make sure before it gets signed, it's attached.
Yeah. And both these, well, I'll make sure that when I sign it, that they're attached, because we're on to this tonight, you can certainly do it.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, all in favor of the lease agreement with Dr. Galliardi? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll move in the motion.
I don't think anybody would move it.
I'll make the motion, and we go ahead and proceed with this lease, Dr. Galliardi.
All in favor of Councilmember, voices, motion to approve the lease? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And Jeff, would you do something, please? Before these are signed, can you PDF these, both these contracts with the, with the attachments, and get those to us before they're signed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on item 2D, which is a motion to consider approving the Ajay Burton Incorporated purchase of seven equivalent dwelling units, or as we commonly call them, EDUs. This is to allow them to make some improvements to their property. This is, this is the property that is on the north side of Old Ocean City Boulevard, where the original dealership has been since their early 50s. Now, they have, the cost of each EDU is $16,686, and they have provided a check to the town of Berlin pending this motion in the amount of $116,802. So, basically, this is one of the conditions when you approve the, I guess, upgrade of that property, one of the conditions was they bought the necessary EDUs, and that's what this is all about.
And they, it's not part of this request tonight, but there will be a need for them to purchase additional EDUs as well, at a point in the near future.
All right. So do, does anyone have any questions for Jeff? Do we have the motion?
I'm ready.
Do we have the motion? Councilmember Purnell to approve the purchase of seven EDUs by Ajay Burton Incorporated on Old Ocean City Boulevard in the amount of $116,802. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, passes at four to zero. Right? Next is the town administrator's report.
Gentlemen, I have, with the lack of department heads here, again, I have their, their diary, as I call it. Okay? So I'll just go down this, we'll get mayor and council update on Maryland Route 376 and US Route 113 widening project. Based upon a recent conversation with the project development group, the contractor will get a notice to proceed hopefully sometime in September of 2020. Once the contract is awarded and we have the contractor scheduled, I'll be able to provide a better timeline for the proposed work. Economic development, working on farmer's market, assisting state highway in the new signage plan for historic Berlin, participated in a variety of conference call meetings pertaining to upcoming economic strategies and tourism promotions. Finance, budget preparation for utility funds for FY '21. Current year review, revenues and expenses, review the pandemic impact on funds, checks and accounts payable, Public Service Commission reports, stormwater fee reviews, meetings with department heads, street projects and highway revenues, and a reserve policy draft. Tomorrow, Natalie and I are going to sit and discuss this reserve policy, so we'll have that to you here very soon. Public works, they did start this past week in wheat spraying and the flower beds throughout town. They're continuing to work on some suggestions in Harren Park, on some, I call it, finishing up some projects that had been started, and they've also started ditch maintenance, cutting ditches. Electric, Tim is, is number one engine, the oldest engine there, the Fairbanks Morris engine, the main bearing in that has proved to be bad, so that's being replaced. The number four engine, which, let's back up, the number two engine was the Mitsubishi that failed. The number four is an exact engine of the one that failed. Both have mirror images of preventive maintenance that's being done on them. The insurance carrier came back to us, and they dropped our certificate of coverage on the number four until we had everything reset back to factory standard. So that, those fuel pumps that they removed, they're putting them on as we speak, that should, that should be up and running. We will not run that generator until we get that insurance certificate back on it. And the new generator should be here any day.
But both generators should be up and operating by the time we need to do--
Yes.
--big shaving operations.
That's right. And the temporary generators are still there in lieu of the new generator, so we've got it covered.
Either way.
That's right. 10 North Main Street, convert overhead service to underground. Franklin Avenue, water tower replaced, the overhead transformer. Baker Street, replace the defective utility pole, power circle, transformer unscheduled power outage. Water resources, replace sewer lateral at 113 Branch Street, cutting grass, oil lift station, wells, and water tower, collecting sludge samples per NBE requirements. Planning department, they issued four building permits, building inspections continue, and then the 711 project on Maryland Route 818 North Main Street, just now submitting stormwater management concepts for the developer to begin. Police department, on 417 Worcester County Law Enforcement, conference call through EOC, reviewed issues, concerns, and problems concerning the COVID-19 situation. Most municipalities have canceled or postponed large events through June 30 of 2020. The state's attorney has been invited to the next in future calls. On 421, Berlin PD obtained 10 cloth face masks from Hamilton Physical Therapy, William and Carl Hamilton. On 421, Chief Downing had a conference call meeting with Worcester County Child Advocacy Board, new officers have been installed in review of services to children. Reports of child abuse lower the last few months due to no school referrals. 422, Berlin 4th of July fireworks meeting with Worcester County Parks and Recreation staff and with Ivy Wells, hardly planning for the next, for this event. 422, members of the Berlin Police Department assisted a drive-through food giveaway held by the Spirit Kitchen, Stephen Yike-- by the Spirit Kitchen, Stephen and the Methodist Church, in support of the Maryland Food Bank. The Berlin Police Department obtained cold storage freezer, directed traffic, and assisted in planning. Conference calls to arrange NYMWF with the EOC, led by Worcester County Health Department and AGH, Worcester County, Department of Worcester County Municipalities, EMS and Fire. Thanks to Councilman Goulias for the donation of hand sanitizer. And that concludes the department head reports. I have something that I, my voice is gone because I've read more today than I've read in the last 12 years. Proceed the letter today, and I do want to read this to the mayor and council. This letter is signed by Carol Rose. It's addressed, Mayor and Council of Berlin, reference proposed pay increases for police officers. First, I'd like to thank Deputy Town Administrator Mary Bolden for all her hard work to enable the budget work session, work session, and scheduled council meetings were available for Berlin citizens to view. In my opinion, it was a great success. I could hear everyone who spoke clearly, and there were no technical difficulties. The purpose of my letter is to advise of my complete support with the proposed police officer's salary increase of 9%. The men and women of our police department are a huge asset to our town. They truly care about our community. The Adapte Senior Program is just one example. Our officers know the elderly in our community who may need extra food or just to visit. They check on the welfare on a regular basis. I participate in the Adapte Senior Program in my church, which is a real blessing for those of us who visit and take food. Our officers have helped with twice a month food distribution, which is helping over 200 families during this kind of uncertainty. As our town administrator stated during the budget workshop, it's time to bring the payment line with other comparable departments. It is my understanding from listening to the budget work session that this 9% pay increase is in the proposed working budget. I sincerely hope that you will approve this in the final budget. Sincerely, Mary Bolden. I do want to also share, I don't know if you've seen this, not saying that by all means, mayor and I have had zero discussion on this, but Ivy and I had a discussion regarding the 4th of July fireworks. It's still scheduled, but I just want the mayor and council aware that some municipalities have already started the cancellation of this. So I've had Ivy check into this to see if we would lose a deposit, how that would work. As it stands right now, the contractor will allow us to move the date, and there's no, we would not incur any issue on that. If we were to cancel it all, that would be lose half our deposit.
And that refers to what I was talking about earlier. If we're waiting to hear from the governor's office as to what orders, guidelines, whatever that will be under, in effect for the first week of July, or anytime in July, and canceling the fireworks takes one phone call. It can happen in a matter of a couple minutes. But we, if it becomes obvious that this is not following the guidelines that we have been following so far, then I would recommend that we consider postponing it to, just for consideration, we don't have to pick a mind tonight, but we are hoping to have a fiscal day, a reopening celebration of some sort this year. Now, when that will be, it'll be late July, sometime in August, early September, I don't know. But I would suggest that as part of that, we might want to consider having the fireworks then, and all this is subject to so many factors that are not within our control, and we just want to be on the side of caution. So, at this point, the only reason, we'll know, I think we'll know well ahead of 4th of July, what the circumstances are in terms of events and activities and congregating people in our state, and I'm, again, have great confidence that our governor and our leadership in the state has been very reasonable and very, I don't know, responsible in the way they have responded to this health crisis so far, this COVID-19 pandemic, and I think if we continue to follow their guidelines, we'll be doing the right thing. And so, just to say, you know, that's for y'all to consider, I mean, you'll have to decide right now, but I would recommend that we postpone it to a later date if that becomes necessary, or if it feels like it's the right thing.
I just wanted to give everyone a pause of what surrounding communities are going. Obviously, we'll make our decision based off the direction we just mentioned.
Is there any stipulation on the, on the adjustment date?
No.
No, so.
Obviously, it's going to be availability.
Yes, right over, but if this thing drags out until November, still good.
I don't think Ivy went that far. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, no, we don't.
And I, I mean, I have another discussion this week, to which you can, you know, find out from me directly.
Have you looked at their contract?
I have not seen it.
Can we look at it, please?
I'd be happy to.
And they have a good relationship with these people, they're not out to fight, they're like everybody else, and just trying to figure how to adapt to the situation and how to maintain a good relationship with the town. And, you know, who knows, if it can't be done, it won't be done. We'll take it a month at a time, because I suspect that some of the decisions the governor has to make, and his advisors, they won't know until we get closer to that time. But, you know, he's talked about a three-phase return to operations and recovery, but I think, you know, expressed earlier in my opening statement, what I, my impression is in terms of the timetable, that that's subject to change, the circumstances change, and we'll cooperate in every way we can.
And that concludes my report.
I just wanted to add one thing quickly. First of all, I'd want to give a shout out to Josh Davis with Ocean Pines, he really is the one who got this set up for us. The other thing is, as the chief indicated in his portion of the report, he thanked Williams Physical Therapy, I think that was the name, for the masks, and I wanted to also let everyone know that they also donated more than 25 masks for general town employees' use as well. So they have really been quite a help. It's actually part of a much larger volunteer organization that's been doing these masks for many, many, many people.
Mary, tomorrow, contact me, we'll make sure we get a letter out, a letter of thanks from the mayor and council for that. Thank you. I already have made my comments, do you have any comments from any of the council members?
I don't know what order we want to go in.
It doesn't matter, you're first.
I would just like to say to everybody, stay safe, and that I missed the last council meeting because my son was sick. He had a sky-high fever, it was scary, but a lot of people reached out, including many of you, to check on us, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Good.
He's doing about it, which is why I'm here.
Yeah, absolutely, that's wonderful. Okay, Troy?
Nothing, sir. I don't have a favor.
All right. Mary, do we have any questions from, that were submitted by the public?
The only questions that we received from the public were actually regarding the budget numbers, and Jeff spoke to the submitter earlier this evening and went over all of that.
Good, good, excellent. Can't have better than personal response. Excellent. All right, well, I think that concludes everything on our agenda tonight. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
To adjourn. All in favor?
Oh, that's right. Man, glad you said that.
Troy, ready or run.
All right, Troy, you can get it.